And then Mike.
And everybody is in.
Ready. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is now called to order. May I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Freeman.
Present.
Commissioner Newt's here. Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Kail. Yeah.
Okay, first order of business tonight is the election of Chair and Vice Chair. At this time, I'll call, I call for nominations. Any nominations for Chair?
Vice Chair, I would like to nominate Commissioner Newt as Chair. I think the preparation that we've seen her do for every meeting that she's attended and been a part of is very obvious, and I think that she'll make an excellent Chair.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other nominations for Chair?
I will second Commissioner Kail's nomination of.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We have a motion by Kail and a second by Lyons. Roll call, please.
Schwartz. Commissioner Schwartz.
No.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Newt. Or Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Commissioner Kail. Or.
Motion carries. Most of the news is now Chair of Livingston City Commission, and the meeting's all yours.
Thanks. Quentin, thanks, Commissioner Schwartz. So now we are going to be moving on to election of Vice Chair. So is there any motion for Vice Chair?
I'd like to motion to nominate Commissioner Kail as Vice Chair. I think that having the mandate from the voters requires that that we should or suggests that we should honor that with an officer position. And for that reason, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Kail for Vice Chair.
Is there a second? I'll second. Roll call, please. Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Commissioner Kail. Or, and thank you.
All right, we have our first agenda item done with. So moving on to Chair assignment of Commissioner seats.
Madam Chair, we have public comment first. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. You're right. Never mind.
It's okay. Thanks. So Chair assignment of Commissioner seats, if you look in the packet on page four, if we were not meeting virtually and we were in person, this is what the room, you have to go on the wayback machine. This is what the room is oriented like. You can read the labels yourself and see where the seating is. Do you all, I want to open it up to the commissioners and see if you have a preference for how you all are seated at the tables. Who wants to go first? Okay, so I think that the convention has been in order of, I don't know for sure because I wasn't here when you made the last, when you made the assignment before I was a commissioner, but Quentin and Mel, could you confirm that the way you've done it conventionally is by the amount of time you've been a commissioner?
Last time Chair picked it. Yeah, Commissioner Hoagland, Chair Hoagland assigned the seats.
Okay, so I'm just gonna do, I'm just gonna go by the convention then for now. If there's no objections to having it go Chair, Vice Chair, which is standard, and then Commissioner Friedman stays in his seat, Commissioner Schwartz in the fourth seat, and Commissioner Lyons on the end. There's no objections. That's our new seating arrangement. Okay, next agenda item is public comment. So this is just a reminder that individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to an item over which the City Commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. If you want to, if you want to leave a comment, just put your name in the chat, or you can raise the little zoom hand, or just come off mute, and just introduce yourself with your name and your address before your comment. Any public comment? All right, I'm assuming that Faith, you'll let me know if you see something in the chat that comes directly to you. Is that correct? Faith and Michael. Okay, so no public comment. So public comment is, general public comment is closed, and we're going to move on to the rest of the agenda. We have one consent item, one proclamation, no scheduled public comment, one public hearing, no ordinance, one resolution, and two action items. So the first item is to consent item A. Do we have any motions for consent item A?
Make a motion to approve consent item A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Schwartz, second by Kail. Roll call, please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kail. Or Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
And Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the 2022 Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Chair of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of Livingston, Montana. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And Mr. Cardus, I wanted to give you a chance. I know these, this proclamation comes up every year. Did you want to say anything about why this proclamation isn't important to the City of Livingston?
So not only is it just a great proclamation on its own as far as in support of Arbor Day and trees in the community, it's also part of the Arbor Day Foundation grant program. So this is one of the requirements for our submission that the tree board usually shepherds in this case for some grant money to support the trees in the community.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a public hearing for ordinance number 3023, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending Article 2, 3, 4, and 5, Chapter 30 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled zoning. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the public hearings. This is the second reading, so it will become effective 30 days if passed this evening. It is a fairly large change to our code. It introduces mixed use and some other options. So I'm going to pass it off to Matthew to give you his information on this code change.
So as we do have new commissioners here today, I'm going to go through this again, which is a little bit unusual. So bear with me, commissioners that were here for December hearing. I'm going to quickly go through the staff report and just talk about what we're doing. As it is a second reading, the final approval would be today, just so you are aware of that. So essentially, this zoning change is the densities, a lot of densities in low-density residential, also known as R1, high-density residential, which is R3, increases the maximum building height in R3 and highway commercial, minimizes the lot size in the highway commercial zone, does update the density requirements table a little bit to make it more clear. And as Michael mentioned, it creates a new mixed-use zone and then updates the setbacks in R3 highway commercial and that new mixed-use zone, and does a slight modification to the partner requirements for multifamily housing. Essentially, with the density update, the R1 district would allow one dwelling unit and one ADU for every 7,000 square feet of land area. You'll notice that these are intended to be in divisible by 3,500 or multiples of 3,500, as that's the standard city lot size, which you can see in that diagram below, which is 25, 540 feet. So essentially, R1 would allow one dwelling units, one ADU per two historic city lots or one dwelling unit or per traditional city lot. R2 would allow basically one dwelling unit or two dwelling units per a traditional city lot. R3 allowing three dwelling units per traditional city lot. And the new mixed-use zone is proposed to allow four dwelling units per traditional city lot. That would be the most dense residentially oriented zoning district in the city. The central business district and highway commercial do not have density limits associated with that. You can see in the table below some of the dwelling units per acre and dwelling units per block for the traditional city block. With the building heights, they are proposed to be increased to 50 feet in R3. I think currently they're 45 feet, which would allow a four-story building and 60 feet in highway commercial, which would allow for a five-story building, as well as mixed use being 60 feet. 60 feet is currently approximately the height of the tallest buildings in town. Setbacks are proposed to be set at zero feet for highway commercial and mixed use, essentially to create a more urban-style design rather than the large front setbacks that we currently have in highway commercial. And zero other than a five-foot front setback in the R3 zone. That five-foot front setback being intended to allow for stoops and encourage stoops just for a little bit more social interaction with the residential units. Parking for multifamily is proposed to be reduced to one space per dwelling unit. Right now, it's generally 1.5 parking spaces. It is a sliding scale. So it's set, proposed to be set to a flat scale of one per dwelling unit. The proposed uses that would be allowed in mixed use are similar to those currently allowed in neighborhood commercials. So it is more of a residentially neighborhood-oriented district versus highway commercial, which is more geared towards those highway uses. So mixed use isn't proposed to allow automobile repair sales, gas stations, drive-throughs, large-scale retail, hotels, or heavy industrial uses. Highway commercial does allow a lot of those. Obviously, anything to do with automobiles is allowed in highway commercials. That's where it's oriented towards, as well as drive-throughs and hotels. And the next part of the staff report is the criteria under state law for zoning regulations. I'm not going to go through those specifically. One of the big ones is that it's made in accordance with the growth policy. I do believe that this is consistent with the vast majority of the growth policy. The growth policy is what has inspired this change. And a mixed-use zone is shown as substantially covering large portions of the city in the future land use map in the growth policy. So that's essentially why this update was undertaken. And it should provide for more density, more mixed land uses, hopefully more housing, and hopefully create a less auto-centric style of development, which is all consistent with the growth policy and really those overarching themes of the growth policy. So I think that consistency is important to note. Otherwise, I'm going to discuss some things that came up with the zoning commission. We did have two meetings on this. There are a couple of comments from the zoning commission and a couple of things that have been changed based on their comments. Design Commission did believe that the city should be more flexible in no-to-low-impacts commercial, specifically manufacturing uses in residential zones. So one change between the staff proposal and what you're seeing today, the zoning commission did vote to allow for artisan manufacturing in the R3 and R2 zones. And they did vote for that unanimously. And then there were questions brought up, and it's also noted in the staff report that increasing density has the potential to cause loss of private green space, specifically in trees within the city. This is the case. The more density you have, often the more impervious surface you're going to have, and often trees will get cut down. That's one of the trade-offs when you do infill is that by infilling, you take up more space for buildings and parking. So the city would rely more on public open space and street trees if we were to increase that density. The city does have ample public space right now. Per capita, our parks are well over the recommended amount. So the zoning commission did not recommend any changes with that specific concern. It's similar concern is that when you take away green space and you increase impervious surfaces, you increase stormwater runoff. This is also correct. It's something that the city would have to handle with any development that is going to occur. With small-scale development, single double lot developments, it often relies on the city stormwater system, which is almost all surface stormwater right now, other than around downtown where it's piped. With large-scale development through our cycle plan process, we do require onsite stormwater retention or retention. Again, the zoning commission didn't recommend any changes with that discussion. And then a couple more questions. The reasoning for the building heights, basically the building heights were reasoned that way to allow for density on very narrow lots. When you have a 25-foot lot, you can't build width, so you have to build height. So that's why basically you'll see that the proposed building heights are commensurate with the number of units that you'd have to stack on top of one another to hit that maximum that's to be allowed. And then the final change that the zoning commission did make was adding the small-scale manufacturing into the description of mixed use. Basically, in the zoning, there's a little description at the beginning of each of the zoning districts, and they did want that to include the word "small-scale retail" when we talk about mixed use or small-scale manufacturing, sorry, when we talk about mixed use. So they voted unanimously to add that into that description. And in the end, they did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the zoning that staff presented to them with the changes that I have just noted to you. This is the second reading of this. The commission did vote unanimously at the first reading to move it to the second reading. And that is all I have for you. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Matthew, for doing that twice for the benefit of all of us. I just want to go through the process really quick so everybody knows the process that we're going to use, which is the process from our Commissioner handbook. So first, commissioners can ask clarifying questions or technical questions. Then, if this is something we want to discuss as a commission, someone will need to make a motion. I'll ask for a motion. Someone will need to second it. Then we can discuss it as a commission. Then we'll open it up for public comment. In this case, it's a public hearing. So that'll be the public hearing. And then after the public has given comment, we'll go back to commission needing to discuss anything else and then move on to a vote for the motion. So does that make sense to everybody? The process? Okay. It's just the standard one we use in our handbook. Okay, so first up, Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you, Chair Newt. Matthew, I'm wondering what the public process was with respect to changing the zones that were, was the potential changes to zones in which they resided and that kind of thing. What's that process like?
So I should have clarified this at the beginning. This is only a zone text amendment, so we're not proposing any changes to the zoning map at this time. We're just updating the text of the zoning ordinance. The next step in this process would be to update the zoning map. Through that process, under our city ordinances, we do need to send every property owner within 300 feet of any proposed map change a certified mailed letter. So they will, anyone that would be within that area that the zoning, specifically the zoning map is going to change, they would get a letter from us telling them when the zoning commission hearing is. The process for this is basically, we have to notice it in the paper 15 days before all of the hearings. So there have been two zoning commission meetings at this point. Those were both noticed 15 days before the zoning commission hearing in the paper, and obviously they're on, the agendas are on our website and on the calendar. And then there have been two city commission meetings now. This is the second one, which are also noticed in the paper and on the website. So that's the public input process.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions for Matthew? All right, so in order to move this forward, we'll need a motion from the commission. So does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion. We pass ordinance 3023.
I'll second.
All right, so next up is the commission discussion. So there's a motion by Friedman and a second by Lyons. And commissioner discussion, do any commissioners want to discuss this item? All right, we'll move on to the public hearing. Do I have to slam something on the table?
No, you can just open it.
Excellent. So this public hearing is open. So any public that wants to comment on ordinance 3023, please put your name in the chat, raise your hand, come off mute. I'm going to ask a procedural question. Some bylaws say we have to call three times for a public comment. We don't need to do that at this, do we? Thank you, Counselor Llewellyn. All right, so public comment, no public comment on ordinance 3023? All right, public hearing closed. So we're going to move on to commissioners. Any last words? All right, roll call, please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kail. Or Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
And Commissioner Lyons.
Motion passes. Next up on the agenda is Resolution Number 5012. Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, in support of the Park County Behavioral Health and Crisis Response Coalition Planning Project. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this resolution is administrative in nature. We are already partnered with the Park County Behavioral Health and Crisis Response Coalition Planning Project. Both Courtney from the city attorney position, well, Kent until he retired at the end of the month, Dale and Wayne were all attending these meetings monthly in our parks and subgroups. So we're already involved and participating in it. But this administrative resolution support is basically just a formal way for the commission to provide the Behavioral Health and Crisis Response Coalition with some documentation as they go out to either the state or look for grant opportunities or just look to other locations that they can show that the commission officially supports this project, which I think is, it's a really good project. We've been working pretty hard on it. If you want specifics on it or where they're at, Courtney would probably be the best to give you that information. But overall, as staff, we strongly support the coalition and would request that you pass this resolution.
Thank you. And did you want, did you want Courtney to add anything before we open it up to the commissioners?
That is up to you.
Okay, we'll move it on to the commissioners then. So commissioners, do you have any clarifying or technical questions about this resolution?
Chair Newt, I'm just curious to know who else is on the coalition besides city staff? Who else is part of the coalition?
Yeah, Mr. Cardus, can you?
Yeah, Courtney, do you want to take a swing at that? It's extensive.
So pretty much it's, we tried to get all of the stakeholders into the planning process. That includes people from the sheriff's office, people from the jail, people from LHC, people from DPHHS, HRDC. I might be missing somebody, but we also tried to loop in the court system. But for the most part, the city and county attorneys' offices are soliciting feedback from the judges and then reporting back to the coalition.
It could also include CHP in the schools. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, CHP in the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 5012. Second.
Motion by Schwartz, second by Friedman. Roll call, please. Or wait, do we want to discuss it first? Anybody want to discuss it first before the roll call?
No.
No, okay, roll call, please. Thank you.
We need public comment.
Public comment.
Thank you. You both are big helpers. So we're going to open it to public comment first. So please, again, raise your hand, come off mute, put your name in the chat if you want to comment on Resolution 5024. All right, seen no one. Now we'll do roll call, please. Thank you.
Chair News.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kail.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Motion passes. So next up on the agenda are action items. These will be slightly less formal in that we won't do technical questions and the motion to discuss. I think we'll have to do a lot of discussion before we get to a motion. So the first action item is discuss, approve, deny, accepting the 2022 commission meeting calendar. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to have Faith share that to your screen real quick. So this is something we instituted last year of trying to set the schedule for the year ahead of time so that's a little more predictable for both the commissioners and the public as we go forward. This is a draft, although I would recommend just a couple of changes to the one that is presented in your agenda packet. So just starting in January, we'll just go through the meetings real quick. It is the solid black squares that are the meetings, the light gray shading are holidays. So obviously, New Year's Day being the first holiday, Martin Luther King Jr. Day being on the 17th. So right now, the scheduled meetings would be on the 4th and the 18th, and then in February, on the 1st and the 15th, which misses President's Day. March is the 1st and the 15th. Still no holidays in March. April 5th and the 19th, so that works out well. 3rd and the 17th for May, so well away from Memorial Day. In June, it is the day following, Juneteenth, but that shouldn't interfere with anything. You should have your agenda as well before that. July is where I would make the first change. Instead of having a meeting immediately after the 4th, since that is traditionally one of the largest holidays in the city, I would move that to the 12th and the 19th meeting to the 26th. So my recommendation would be the 12th and the 26th in July. And then moving the first meeting in August to the 9th. That would give you, that would still give you two weeks between each set of meetings, which works out very well because August is a five Tuesday month. So you would do the 12th and the 26th in July, the 9th and the 23rd in August. And then September, pick back up on the regular scheduled meetings on the 6th and the 20th, and then moving into October. The 4th and the 18th, which misses Indigenous Peoples' Day on the 10th. Well, and because Election Day is the first Tuesday of November, unless the first Tuesday is the first, Election Day is the 8th this year, which allows us to have our meeting on the 1st and the 15th. Again, misses both the Again, misses both the the Election Day, which is a city holiday on even year, so that would be a holiday this year, and as well as Veterans' Day and Thanksgiving. So that works out well. And then in December, the meetings would be on the sixth and the thirtieth, which keeps us well away from Christmas holidays, which would be on the twenty-third and the twenty-sixth in December of twenty-two. So the draft you have before you is my recommendation, except for July and August, which I would change slightly to give us more time around the Fourth of July holiday.
And just to clarify, on, in December, you said sixth and thirtieth, but I believe you meant sixth and twentieth.
Sixth and twentieth, yeah, thirtieth would not be good.
Right, that would be unfortunate and an interesting way to spend our Friday. Okay, so I want to open it up to commissioner discussion and see first, like, do any of you have conflicts on the proposed dates, the ones that Mr. Cardus just went over?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Friedman.
I want to thank them very much for putting the calendar out. It's the first one we've had, and I think it's a great idea, so a big hooray for that.
Thank you. Any other commissioner, Commissioner Lyons?
I, I, I foresee two conflicts myself, but I think that's just schedules and I don't expect to change any meetings to accommodate those two conflicts.
Do you feel comfortable sharing which dates?
Yeah. March fifteenth. I will be in the southern Madison range. And in, on October eighteenth, I will be having, hopefully, my wife and my second anniversary wedding party to replace the, the wedding that we didn't get to do. But, um, so I I don't expect the commission to accommodate that. I won't be able to make those two.
Okay. Does anyone else? Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. So it sounds like you're not asking for any changes. Does any other commissioner want to want to comment on days that they have conflicts? My suggestion would be, I would be interested in moving the June twenty-first meeting to the twenty-eighth. And it would fall in line with all of the changes made in July and the first meeting in August. So we'd still have a week between the twenty-eighth and the July twelfth. Are folks open to that? Okay, so.
Any reason or?
I just have a conflict with that date.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And it still spaces us, Commissioner Schwartz, with in the July and August, the schedule that Michael amended, it still spaces it, so we're every other week. Instead of having two weeks between. So, I'm sorry, did you have something?
It's fine with me.
Okay. So, does anyone else? Commissioner Cale? Okay, so for this one, it would be, the motion would need, I just want to get clarification from Mr. Cardus and our city attorney. For the motion, we need to make all the, mark all those dates as amending the calendar. Is that correct? From the original copy, okay?
Just the changes, yep.
Yep, so the agreed upon changes would be moving the twenty-first to the twenty-eighth, the fifth to the twelfth, the July fifth to July twelfth, July nineteenth to twenty-sixth, and then August second to August ninth. So whoever makes the motion would need to indicate those changes in the motion, if that's what we're agreeing to. So, any other questions before I ask for a motion? Alright. I'll entertain a motion.
Chair Newt, I will attempt to make this motion. Make a motion that we accept the commissioner meeting calendar twenty twenty-two with the following changes. June twenty-first being moved to June twenty-eighth, July fifth being moved to July twelfth, July nineteenth being moved to July twenty-sixth, and August second being moved to July ninth.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Cale, second by Lyons, and now we need to open it to public comment. So any public comment on this action item? It's a quiet evening, huh?
Yeah.
Alright, no public comment? Back to the commission. Any final thoughts before a vote?
Do it.
Alright, roll call please.
Chair Newt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cale.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Excellent, motion passes. So the last action item we have tonight is to discuss approved deny assigning commissioners to serve on city boards and committees. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is, the commissioner assignments to boards happens every year, beginning in January. So all of the board's assignments are at the discretion of the commission. You can choose which board you sit on as a group. Let me share the screen real quick. So here is the, there are six six city boards that have sitting commissioners. You can see we've listed when those meetings take place. So you have an idea as far as scheduling goes, as well as whether you would be a voting or non-voting member of the board. And then I have listed my recommendations based off of the the criteria set in the commissioner's guide. And I'm happy to talk through any of those that you have questions on. And then we will just stand by for your decisions as a commissioner, where you would like to be sat.
Thank you. I want to start with disclosures. And like a history also of like which commissioners have been on which boards. So my disclosure is that my spouse is a library director, so I should not and do not want to serve on the library board. And, Mr. Cardus, can you, do you have the, I don't know if you, if you can remember all of the boards that current commissioners have been on, but I think that the history would be good of which commissioners have already served on which boards? Just for a refresher.
Certainly. So from this last year, returning commissioners, Commissioner Schwartz was on the health board, Commissioner Freeman was on the tree board. You were on the planning board. Commissioner Holland, Chair Holland was on the Parks and Trails. And Commissioner Maybe was on the URA, the Urban Renewal Agency. I think Commissioner Schwartz is, did you do a URA or planning board? Which one did you do prior to that?
Uh, URA.
URA, that's correct. And I think Commissioner Freeman has always also done the library board. And I'm not sure if he's done one other board, but those they, oh, at one time we had a seat on the Sister City, and I believe he was on that. But we no longer have a seat on that one. We also used to send a commissioner to the, the city-county airport board, we no longer do that. So I think that's, that's all the historical knowledge I have. If any commissioners want to chime in with anything else they've done.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Schwartz has been on the library board and the historic preservation board and the really like, you run a lot of boards, like airport board and
Yeah, I was on the airport board, but historic preservation, that was fifteen some odd years ago, maybe twenty.
That still counts.
Yeah. They don't, they don't require, they don't want a commissioner on their board.
So I, um, I would like if we could, I would like to get a sense of what boards commissioners want to be on, because I know this is, um, different folks on the commission have different interests and backgrounds. And so I would love to hear from each one of you about which boards you're most interested in. And sort of shake that out as we make our decisions. So I'm just gonna go through the list. So Vice Chair Cale, do you want to go first?
Um, sure, I can do that. I certainly have interest in city-county health board. I have some medical background, and so that seems very interesting to me. Worked in that field for a while. Urban renewal would be okay with me. I've worked in the tourism sector for quite some time as well. I do have a little concern about tree board. Only because one of the organizations that I work for is doing some fundraising for the tree board, and we have a staffer who's sitting on that board as well, so just, just a heads up on that. And I think I might have some probably better that I'm not on Parks and Trails as well, just with some of my day work.
Thank you so much. So those are the, those are the two boards that may have some conflict for you.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else before we move to the next commissioner? You still have the floor.
I, I, I think that that's it, but honestly, you know, I, I could go on and happily go wherever I'm needed, so.
Thank you. Alright, so next up, Commissioner Friedman. Do you have board preferences or special interests or experience?
I would gladly give up the tree board. I've been on there for a thousand years and to another assignment, if that's okay.
Is there anything that's, that's especially interesting to you, or are you just open to?
Everything interests me.
Okay.
But I've just been on there for a long time, so if you have another opening somewhere, I may give somebody else a chance at the tree board.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Commissioner Schwartz. Do you have any special interests or experience, like certain boards that you really want to serve on?
I wouldn't mind going back on the URA. I enjoyed my time there and in keeping downtown relevant with the programs that they have. Yeah. I'd like to, like to get back on that and continue. But other than that, I'm, I'm flexible. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyons.
As you might expect, I have a strong preference for the planning board. And given that I have not heard interest from any of the commissioners report, I will not suggest any others, but I wouldn't be open to, to any others.
Thank you. So I will say that I will happily take a break from the planning board. It's an excellent board. And I've been on it for three years. So I think we should go through, we should go through with what we know so far. So it sounds like Carrie, are you able to type this in, Faith or Mr. Cardus? We do it. So I think Carrie on the health board. This is just gonna be like a draft, a draft idea based on the feedback we just got. And then Commissioner Schwartz on the URA. And then Commissioner Lyons on planning. I will happily take the tree board. I'll take that baton from you, Mel. I'll take the tree board. And then Mel, that leaves the library board and Parks and Trails. So do you have?
Library board.
Library board, okay. So we have Parks and Trails are left. So I want to go back to Parks and Trails and discuss some of these, some of these boards meet quarterly and some meet monthly, so that might help us decide which commissioner should serve on two boards. Commissioner Cale already expressed a concern about conflict. Are there any other commissioners that would be interested or open to Parks and Trails?
I, I would be interested in Parks and Trails. I'm gonna research on active transportation, so I think that would be a good fit as well.
Okay. And you, you feel alright with two monthly board meetings in addition to commissioner meetings?
Lay it on me.
Okay. I wonder, in terms of protocol, I don't know if this has been done before. Mr. Cardus, if there's a way like if, moving forward, if we have to wait for the full cycle, or if like a commissioner can sub for Commissioner Lyons if he's for some reason can't attend both meetings, is that, are those things that we can adjust moving forward?
As far as changing midstream, I think that is up to the commission as a whole, so as long as you both do it, that's, that's perfectly acceptable. As far as subbing in, it's really not necessary as anything that these boards do will come to the full commission as their advisory board. So while it's nice to have a commissioner there, if they're unable to attend, it doesn't necessarily change anything, because if, if moved on, it will move on to the full commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, Chair Newt. I instinctually volunteered myself for the Parks and Trails Committee because that is a interesting, but I am having trepidation now that I'm also on the, the Wind Rider Committee. And so that would be three boards and committees beyond the commission. And so maybe, now that I'm thinking about it, I'd be the best person, just, just because I, I maybe would have less time than somebody else might be able to committee. So I'm not saying I won't do it, but maybe somebody else would be better suited.
Okay. Thank you for that, Commissioner Lyons. Other commissioners, is there anyone else interested in Parks and Trails? Commissioner Friedman or Commissioner Schwartz, do either one of you have an interest in Parks and Trails? Serving on that committee, in addition to, it looks like the the library board is monthly, but the URA meets quarterly? I wonder what your thoughts are, Commissioner Schwartz?
I, I, I could do Parks and Trails, but URA, I thought not monthly, but, oh, yeah, I guess they are. And it's plus or minus, it depends on the activity level there. Was, it used to be monthly, but it's not really that big of a thing. Yeah, I would have no problem working on Parks and Trails.
And then, thank you. And then if it sounds like the URA might pick back up, if I'm understanding correctly, is URA might meet more frequently if there's more decisions to be made, is that correct, Mr. Cardus? Okay, I see Courtney nodding.
Yeah, it's, it's mainly if, if they have money.
So why don't we, why don't we, I would suggest in the chair's appointment, the, the the column E that we have just worked through. And then Commissioner Schwartz, if the URA meetings start changing, or you start to feel like it's more meetings than you have capacity for, if we're able to change as a commission who's on that board, so we can make sure we're meeting the needs of the boards and supporting each other with our sort of shared capacity, I would like to do that. We'll just have to communicate well with each other if we need to make any changes mid-year. Does that sound alright with everyone?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. So I think Parks and Trails is doing a lot right now too, so it'll be great to have make sure we have that board covered. There's a lot of exciting things happening on that board. Okay. If nothing else.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, for volunteering. I appreciate it. Maybe it was too in there and I appreciate you stepping up.
And we all appreciate your eagerness, Commissioner Lyons, to serve. So so we've discussed all this, so I want to first entertain a motion and a second, and then we'll open it to public comment. And then we'll go back to a vote. So first, do we have a motion on action item B? And please, in your motion, be specific about what you're making a motion for.
I, I make a motion to approve assigned commissioners to serve on city boards and committees, and the assignment being in the chair's, from the chair's appointment column. With city planning board being Commissioner Tori Lyons, city tree board being Chair Melissa Newt, city county health being Vice Chair Carrie Cale, city county library being Commissioner Mel Friedman, Livingston Urban Renewal Agency being Commissioner Quentin Schwartz, and Parks and Trails Committee being Commissioner Quentin Schwartz.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Cale, second by Friedman, and now we will open it to public comment. No one wants to give public comment? It's the last agenda item. Come on, everybody. All right, no public comment. So we'll move on to Commissioners. I just want to say before we vote, thank you for that robust discussion of board assignments. Our boards are so important and they do so much for us, and I really appreciate your service to the Commission, each one of you, and also going the extra mile to serve on boards. It's, it's a lot you do for our community, and, and I'm really grateful for it. So thank you for stepping up and sharing your expertise and your passion in these extra spaces. Any other Commissioners want to comment? All right, roll call, please.
Chair Newt?
Or?
Vice Chair Cale? Or Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Lyons?
Four.
Motion passes. So next up on the agenda is city manager comment. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have a couple of quick things for you this evening. First, I would like to share my screen to note that we are missing some pictures of current commissioners. So if your picture is not here in the Commissioner section of our beautiful website, please quickly, has did I, it is? Can everybody see the screen? Anyway, no, you can't see it, huh? Let me see, stop, share. Share screen. Sure. I will do. So if you go to the city website, you'll notice that Commissioner Lyons and Commissioner Cale, Vice Chair Cale, do not have headshots for the members of the Commission, so please provide those to Faith, and we will get your your wonderful pictures up on our website so that everyone can see. Additionally, for this evening, just a couple of reminders to the public at large. One, license your pets. I licensed my dogs today, so come on in, get your pet license for your cats and your dogs, whatever else you need to license, as well as your business licenses, if you have a business operating out of the city of Livingston, or that operates in the city of Livingston, even if your business is outside of the city. So those are my reminders for this evening. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you. And now I have to add that to my to-do list, like probably many of you, the licensing of pets. So thanks for the friendly reminder. Next up is Commissioner comments. Commissioner Lyons?
Excited to be here. Thank you for running a great meeting, Chair Newt, and thanks to Commissioner Schwartz for volunteering for those two boards. I I'm over eager, and I really appreciate you committing your time to that. It's really important. Thanks again.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
I'd just like to welcome aboard our two new commissioners, look forward to working with everybody this year, and twenty-twenty-two's got to be better from a health standpoint in any way. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Commissioner Friedman?
Yeah, I want to wish everybody a good new year coming. I would like to set up a meeting somehow with the new Commissioners, just to get them known in a relaxed setting. And I thank them for coming on board. It's an important thing that we do. And looking forward to a good year, so I want to thank everybody for the work that they do. Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Cale?
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. I'm really excited to be on the Commission and looking forward to working with all the Commissioners. Thank you for your vote of confidence and putting me in the Vice Chair position. I look forward to working with all the city staff as we move forward, and Commissioner Friedman, love to grab a cup of coffee sometime. I'm going to be really honest, I'm in house arrest for five days. I tested positive for COVID this afternoon, so please, if you have a stuffy nose, which is what I or any of those random little symptoms, go get tested and then stay home if you need to. So, thank you very much. Chair Newt?
Thank you, and on behalf of, I'm sure, everyone, we hope you're we hope you have a quick and speedy recovery and you don't feel too awful. I want to thank you all for your vote of confidence in being the chair and encourage you to reach out to me if yeah, you have any thoughts or feedback that you want to give me, Commissioners. I also want to make a request. I've been thinking about this transition. This is the biggest transition since I've been the Commissioner in terms of number of Commissioners that have changed, and I would like it to be as smooth as it can be for the Commission and for staff. So what I'm hoping, what I'd like to make a motion for myself is a closed session to introduce the new Commissioners to some of the personnel issues in the city that are ongoing. And I think that would be probably within the next like month or so, just as you're sort of onboarding, spreading out the onboarding to make sure you have all the information the rest of the Commissioners who've been here longer have. Do I need a second for calling a special meeting as Chair?
Think you'd have slapped a date so we can notice it. Think, I don't know.
Mr. Cardus?
The answer is not necessarily, but probably preferably.
Okay. So I, I want to get through the training with Dan Clark that's coming up later this month. And so I want it to be after that. That's on January, or, yeah, January twelfth, is that right? I think it's on the city calendar. January twelfth, okay. So this week is a Commission meeting, next week would be the training with Dan Clark, and then the following week, the eighteenth, would be a Commission meeting, so maybe sometime at the end of January, at a time that works for the Commission. Maybe Faith could send, I don't know, Faith, can you do doodle polls? Is that a thing that the Commissioners can do? I don't know if you can do doodle polls for the Commission.
Yeah, we could. As long as it's administrative, it doesn't necessarily have to be in an open meeting, so if it's just setting dates, I think that's fine, as long as it's early enough to notice it.
Yeah, so maybe the last week in January, and if that doesn't, if we're doing like a larger window, we could, we could open it up into February, too. I know that we have a lot of working Commissioners right now, and so I want to be really flexible with times and potentially include daytimes as well, if that's easier for Commissioners to like come in on a lunch hour. And I'd propose the large conference room in the City Hall. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Tori. Do you need any other information? Mr. Cardus on a special meeting?
I'll just send out a poll for availability, time availability, and then we'll probably just put it on the agenda as an action item for the next meeting, and that way we can collectively verify that that, whatever date picked works.
Thanks, that sounds great. All right. Moving along. I never remember how these things end, except for, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. The City of Livingston Commission meeting on January fourth is officially over at six thirty-three PM Mountain Time. Thanks, everybody.